Do we have members of the, in the audience, Bridgette? Do we need to ask you to do your usual pre?
Yes, we do. We have seven people so far. I have one raising their hand and I'm pretty sure just, I don't think he's been on many of the Zoom calls, unless it's something regarding, I can see that he's raising his hand and we're going to get started. So if he has a public comment, he can speak at that time. So I will go ahead and get our, our ball roll in here.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry about all the pickups here. All right. So just wanted to welcome everyone this evening to our July 13th, 2021, City of Happen Bay Planning Commission hearing. Couple of items, because we do have several people in the audience. This evening, this meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 and on the Pacific Coast website TV. Other website. We have several in attendance. So just to review for public comment, there will be a general public comment that Commissioner Ruddick will open and allow for. If it's for specific items, the chair will open up that specific public comment item at that time that's on the agenda. During those, those wanting to speak, please raise your hand. There's a virtual hand on your phone, tablet or iPhone. If you are calling by telephone, which I do see someone on the phone, you will push star six to raise and unraise your hand and star, star nine for mute and unmute yourself. I will be given three minutes and there will be, should be a timer on the screen here shortly. The planning commission did not receive, or actually the staff did not receive any comments that I'm aware of to send out. So nothing was sent this afternoon. Thank you for your patience and I would like to now hand over these to Chair Ruddick to officially begin our meeting.
Thank you, Bridgette. Call the meeting to order and invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Bridgette, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Chair Benjamin, I mean Commissioner Benjamin.
I am present.
Commissioner Gorn.
Hi.
Commissioner Hernandez. He's, he is absent. I just, he's been sending me messages, sorry. Vice Chair Pogar.
Here.
And Chair Riddick.
Here.
Are present.
Very good. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes of the last planning commission meeting, which was June 29th of this year. Do any commissioners have comments on the minutes? Commissioner Benjamin, please.
Yes, two minor matters. First, in the summary of the prior meeting, the meeting of June 9, the minutes correctly state that I recused because I wasn't here, but it says I wasn't here at the May 9 meeting. So I'd like it to reflect that I wasn't here on the night the meeting took place, so changing May to June. And then in the discussion on the hotel that we had at the last meeting, I wanted to clarify when we were talking about the idea of there being a permanent monument that documented the location of the wetland and that there would, like I was describing a boulder that had been permanently located to communicate where the wetland was. I would suggest that we clarify the minutes to say that I had suggested a, a permanent monument indicating the location of the wetland and that it was to be preserved in perpetuity. And I will note that a member hooker of the Architectural Review Committee liked that idea. So those would be my only proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion of the minutes of the last meeting? If we could have a motion to approve them with Commissioner Benjamin's modification, that would be helpful.
To move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Gorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pogar?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion passed for.
The minutes as modified are approved. Next on our agenda, as at every planning commission meeting, the commission welcomes comments from members of the public at this point in the agenda on, on any items other than those which, which follow later in this meeting. So if, I don't know if members of the public with their hands raised want to comment at this point, but you're certainly welcome to. As long as it's not in reference to the two items later in the agenda. If it is that, then please hold it to that point in the meeting.
Looks like we have two, so I will pull this out. First one is Frank Garrity.
Welcome, Mr. Garrity.
You can speak.
Chair Riddick and Bridgette, one, one quick note. I asked, there are actually two people here on one computer, a neighbor is here who, his computer was not working. So Pamela Fisher is also here with, with her hand raised. So I will speak and then if you can let Pam speak next, that's fine. We'll call on her later.
Okay.
Right. Thank you very much. Tell me when I am able to start.
We start.
Yeah, I'm going to time it here. I don't have it on the screen, so go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. Again, my name is Frank Garrity. I am here tonight to provide an update and share concerns about two CDPs that were approved two years ago by four of the five of you still serving on the planning. It appears as if the city of Happen Bay is not enforcing the two CDPs as required by the LCP. The background is that two years ago in May of 2019, the planning commission approved two CDPs for the Cabrillo Unified School District. One was for the replacement of football lights with a heightened variance. The other was for the installation of a new cellular power harness. Both of the CDPs were approved with conditions attached to mitigate the negative impact of light caused by gaps in the tree bumper. The conditions attached to the CDP required CUSD to retain a qualified arborist to evaluate the health of eleven previously planted trees and any mature trees that were in failing health at the time and to have a tree screen required and to be maintained. The current situation is that CUSD has never completed these conditions. Now, on June 7th of this year, they began a major tree removal and trimming project totaling an estimated 81 trees. This project is being completed under the original CDPs and opposed to plant nine-foot redwood and four 14-foot Monterey Cypress trees to mitigate the light from towers that are 86 feet above ground level. The growth rate of that plan will not mitigate the impacts within our lifetimes. Therefore, we believe that the mitigation proposed not consistent with the CDP. The evidence that supported the CDP stated that there was a sufficient buffer in place and did not include the removal and or trimming of approximately 81 trees. It's very unlikely that at the time of the CDPs, USC Arborists failed to notice a total of 81 trees that needed removal and or trimming, yet just two years later, that large number of trees has failed. The conditions attached to the CDPs was to remedy a specific issue at the time of the project. And evaluation health of the 11 failing trees, cumulative impact of 81 trees to be removed and or trimmed was not included in the original CDPs. We believe that the scope of the form project is not consistent with the scope of the original CDP. That's why we believe this CDP Happen Bay is not enforcing the CDP as required by the LCP. My final comment is about the permit process. These two projects were completed to the benefit of the applicant two years ago, yet two years later, the conditions attached to the CDPs have still not been completed. I would think that conditions attached to a CDP to mitigate the negative impact of a project should be completed prior to that or at the same time as the project. My request is that you have a special meeting to review this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Through the chair, point of order. I had a little bit of, thank you. I had a little bit of difficulty understanding the speaker. I, I think I got the gist of the comments and I wonder if I was the only one or if that was a broader problem.
Well, I.
I also had, it, it came in and out, but I did, I did understand the gist of it too, but it was kind of going in and out for me as well.
Okay, so with, with the chair's indulgence, I had to ask him to suggest that the speaker speaks slowly so that we don't lose any of the other speakers and assure the speaker that we, the previously speaker, that we, we heard everything.
Yes, excellent point. I, I also think that if, Mr. Garrity, if you were speaking from notes, it would be also helpful for you to send those an email or, or snail mail to the planning commission and staff.
Just saying. Yes. Yes, I will sure do that. Thank you very much.
Yes, if your neighbor who's with you wants to speak next, I think that's fine.
Great. I'll do my best to fit the three minutes in, but I did not practice it slowly. So I basically want to, I will reiterate what Frank said. Two years ago, the city identified the numerous homes in the Highland Park neighborhood, which would likely be impacted by the new field lights and placement of the ATT tower. The city's letter informed us of the intended coastal development permit, which would be discussed, modified and approved at that planning commission meeting. The language in the CDP specified that the existing buffer would be preserved to shield our homes from these new field lights. Included in the lengthy CDP, a non-specific paragraph of two to three sentences stated dead or dying trees would be removed. Being familiar with Happen Bay city policy of one-to-one tree removal and replacement, our fears of increased light pollution were diminished that evening. The ATT tower, the tower placement was also deemed a temporary two-year placement and would be moved to a more appropriate location. I received a letter from Mr. Contreras on May 26. Since the city had already established a contact list notification on the CDP that I received, I was quite frankly surprised that nobody else seemed to have received the letter, even someone across the street from me. So of course I sent the letter around. When we first met Mr. Contreras, he claimed no knowledge of the number of trees which would be removed or pruned. We informed him that we had already been informed by the city planning director that 81 trees, including heritage trees, would be impacted. We met with Jesus in person at my home on June 2nd. Once he knew we had more specific information, he agreed to send us the SSA plan, the plan that SSA had devised. When the city, when I asked, was the city in receipt of the SSA plans? We were in receipt of this email at 5:20 Friday, 6:04 2021, with the SSA project to begin the next business day. As the effects of the size and scope of this project was designed to last six weeks, we were shocked. We had all, all had a great deal of difficulty reading the plan and basically to be told by the city planning director that this happened because of the two innocuous sentences in the original CDP. That truly strained credulity. What is, what has occurred is not, we looked to see if the trees were marked. We couldn't see anything on them and it was a very complicated plan that SSA produced. What has occurred frankly is not in compliance with the original CDP that we requested. We requested the project be stopped due to insufficient notification. No action was taken. What I am, since the city has, who are charged with enforcing the CDP, they find themselves in a situation, for whatever reason, they've been unable to meet their obligation. What we are requesting is a special meeting called by the planning commission so that we may publicly discuss this issue. And what our big question is, how are we to be made whole after this? So this is a very complicated issue, but this is not, this, this project is not in compliance with, with the original CDP nor the intent of the planning commission that evening, I would venture to say. So thank you very much. And again, we are looking for a means to be made whole and that may become a very complicated issue. Appreciate, appreciate the time. Anyway.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment. Yes, thank you for your comments. We, at this public comment, we, as you know, don't, don't really invite back and forth between
No, I know.
members of the public and staff, but I would, I would trust that, that there would be appropriate follow-up from, from staff on this matter.
Yes, and I think when, when Pam was talking about Mr. Contreras, that is from, I believe from the school district. And there was a community meeting held almost two weeks ago, I believe. And we're, and staff participated in that. That's, you know, I, I think, you know, this one goes back as long as I've been here with the city, but we'll take it under an advisement with regard to what their request is. And certainly when Joe returns, we will discuss the issue and figure out a path forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Doughty. Commissioner Benjamin, is your hand up anew or is that from a few minutes ago?
Okay. I do have.
It was a few minutes ago, sorry.
Looks like I have one other public commenter by the name of Wendy.
Welcome, Wendy.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, very good. I have never done this before, so please bear with me. I am also a neighbor in the Highland Park area and have been severely impacted by the work that was done on the trees. The, our buffer has been completely removed. And I was at the meeting two weeks ago and, but before that, we were not notified about the work and we were out of town, out of the country actually, for six weeks and we were not here to receive a notice. And when Pam got the notice, she told us about it. And my husband attended the meeting at her house with Jesus. The meeting on, I don't know what day, because I wasn't back yet. But I attended the meeting two weeks ago and they discussed all of the things that you already heard from Pam and Frank. But my concern is to somehow do whatever we can to regain the buffer as quickly as we can. The trees, there's a plan for planting and there's, there's, oh, I think there's only like 20 or 30 trees that they're planning on planting and, and there were 81 trees affected. They're planting some bushes. And we discussed with the, the landscape architect and the contractor who's going to do the planting and the irrigation about changing now that it's clear the impact that the pruning and the tree removal had, the plan should be revised, on the planting plan should be revised based on what they can actually see. And that the trees that we want to plant need to be changed because we don't want, that, that we're, the neighborhood is in agreement that they do not want redwood trees. The redwood trees take too long to grow and we would rather replace the redwood trees with Cypress, Monterey Cypress trees. And on the property, there are obvious trees that were planted around the same time and the Monterey Cypress have performed much better and to provide a better buffer than the redwood tree. So we wanted to get the Cypress trees planted instead. I would like to have a meeting as soon as possible with you folks, if possible, because the, I'm afraid that they're going to start planting trees before we get an agreement about what should be happening.
Well, thank you for your comments on, on this issue.
Thank you for your time.
Again, we'll, we'll look to our capable staff for the appropriate follow-up on, on this issue.
Looks like I have no other public, general public comments.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is the application for a coastal development permit to do with the Poplar Pedestrian Pathway. As, as, as many of you know, my, my home is quite close to the east end of the Poplar path. And while I, I think that I probably don't have a conflict of interest regarding this, I'm not 100% certain of that. And I think my best course with an abundance of caution, as they say, is to recuse myself on this issue. So I will. So I will, um, I will turn off my camera and mute myself and pass the gavel to Vice Chair Polger, the virtual gavel. And then, uh, at the conclusion of this topic, I will rejoin the meeting. So thank you all for your understanding on that.
All right, thank you, Chair Riddick. Um, all right, so then, um, let's go ahead with this item. Is the, is this, um, are we gonna hear from you, Brittany, about this one?
Yes, and Bridget will run the PowerPoint. Ready when you are.
There it goes.
And that is not in presentation mode, but we can keep on going anyway.
Yeah, go ahead and start it, I'm, I'm on it.
Okay, um, so, good evening, everyone. This is, um, a coastal development permit project for the Poplar pedestrian pathway reconstruction project. Um, we'll go ahead to the next slide, thank you. And so I will give a overview of the project, um, tonight, and then we will take clarifying questions from the planning commission, um, a public comment period, and then the planning commission discussion as we typically do. Uh, next slide, please. So the, um, project involves the, uh, replacement.
The, I don't know about if others are having this issue, but for me, the slides are kind of cut off at the bottom and the sides. Are others having that issue?
Yes.
Yeah, I see you.
Is there a way to zoom out, Bridget? Sorry, I don't know why we're having every PowerPoint issue tonight.
Just have to zoom out.
While you're fixing this, I'm gonna let my noisy cat out of the room.
That's good. Do you see an option to zoom out, Bridget?
Not when I'm in presentation, but there's a, a zoom, zoom on into the slide, but I, it just makes it, it won't. Just keeps changing the slide, actually.
I have the file too, you want me to try?
You wanna try it, go for it.
We could go to the version with notes on it.
It's just smaller, I don't, I don't know why it's having such quickity. There you go.
That looks good.
Yeah, go for it, Maz. You're on. Second slide. One more.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so the project involves the removal, replacement, and widening of the existing pedestrian trail that runs parallel to Poplar Street between Railroad Avenue to the east and the coastal trail to the west. The path will be widened from eight to ten feet between Railroad Avenue and the footbridge, which is located approximately, um, at the red arrow pointing down from the north. Um, and then will remain eight feet wide west of the footbridge. Uh, the project also includes three speed tables and associated traffic signs along Poplar Street for traffic calling. Next slide, please. Uh, so as you can see in these photos, the existing trail is in dire need of repair and, uh, this is a very heavily used coastal access and recreation area by many different user groups. And the condition of the trail necessitates removal and replacement. The intent of the project is to improve public safety, coastal access, and A D A compliance. Um, the trail traverses through planned unit development and open space passive zoning, where public trails and maintenance of such trails are a permitted use. Next slide, please. Uh, so this project is one of the phase one components of the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan, which is a draft master plan for managing public access and erosion and drainage and natural resources along this bluff top area. Uh, phase one projects such as this have been moving forward over the last couple of years to address public safety and drainage concerns. This project was also presented to and supported by the Parks and Recreation Commission at their recent June meeting. Next slide, please. Uh, so to get into, uh, compliance of the project with our general plan and local coastal program, this, um, the Poplar Street area is identified as a primary scenic coastal access route in the new land use plan and the area west of Railroad Avenue is identified as a broad ocean view shed area. So this project is located within these visual resource areas, but the scope of work primarily, um, involves upgrade improvements and the scenic quality of the area will remain substantially unchanged. The, um, six traffic signs for the speed tables will be consistent with the signage in the area and will not substantially obstruct ocean views. Next slide, please, oh, thank you. Um, as noted, the intent of the project is to improve public access and safety and A D A compliance along this pedestrian trail. And construction staging and storage will occur within the Poplar Beach parking lot and will be fenced off to protect the public and the surrounding natural areas. Construction is anticipated to take one to two months and will occur during weekday daytime hours only to minimize public access impacts. And although construction, uh, will cause temporary impacts, uh, to public access, a traffic control and detour plan will be implemented to ensure public safety and access to and along the coastal trail for the public. Uh, we did include conditions of approval that require public noticing prior to construction and concurrence with the proposed detour plan to further minimize, uh, potential impacts to public access. Next slide, please. The project is located approximately one hundred feet from the coastal bluff edge and is not currently subject to coastal hazards, but historic bluff erosion rates suggest that the project area will be subject to these hazards in the future. Uh, however, nothing in the proposed design would preempt the city from making modifications to this area in the future, including for managed retreat of the coastal trail as we are addressing through the, uh, Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. The project itself will not contribute to coastal hazards as it involves limited grading and new, uh, limited new impervious area. Next slide, please. Uh, the project will replace the existing trail in this previously disturbed area and involves minimal excavation for construction. Um, however, the project site is located within an area designated in our new land use plan as potentially sensitive for archaeological resources. Uh, so a cultural record search was conducted and turned up positive results for sacred lands. Uh, so we have also included a condition of approval, um, requiring consultation with the appropriate Native American tribal representative and a permit amendment will be sought if this consultation results in any, uh, necessary changes to the permit. Uh, however, this is not anticipated due to the, the scope of work. Uh, can, our standard conditions of approval are also included to address handling and consultation and mitigation requirements if any artifacts or other resources are discovered during construction. Next slide, please. Uh, so there was a biological resource evaluation conducted for this project and it identified, uh, non-native grasslands to the north of the existing trail, um, disturbed or rural areas immediately bordering the trail and in the areas of the proposed trail widening. Uh, there are roadside ditches on either side of Poplar Street and areas of vernal marsh and northern coastal scrub to the south of the trail, um, separated from the project footprint by Poplar Street itself. The, uh, native grasslands, roadside ditches, and vernal marsh habitats were found to be low to potential, sorry, low to moderate potential habitat and for several special status species, including the California red-legged frog, the San Francisco garter snake, Corus's popcorn flower, coastal marsh milk ve- veche, and, uh, perennial gold fields, as well as a number of avian species. Uh, so there are, um, avoidance and minimiz- minimization measures proposed in the, the B R E to avoid potential impacts to these habitat areas and the, um, special status species that they have potential to support. And so an initial study and negative declaration was prepared to mitigate those potential impacts, um, below significant levels. Uh, so this I S M N D, uh, was prepared following, following certification of the land use plan and additionally addresses coastal terrace prairie, um, and overwintering raptors. Next slide, please. So the trail reconstruction has been cited and designed to prevent impacts to the surrounding habitat areas since it is located within these buffer areas and is a, um, permitted use in these habitat buffer areas. Uh, so some of these, uh, design aspects include the, uh, project will not involve any sensitive vegetation removal or disturbance. Uh, sensitive areas, including the vernal marsh and coastal terrace prairie and northern coastal scrub will be fenced off for construction while the roadside ditch between the trail and Poplar Street will be, uh, protected through standard best management practices. Um, Poplar Street separates the project area from the vernal marsh, as I mentioned. Uh, so no impacts are anticipated to occur there. Um, and construction is, um, anticipated to commence in September and be complete by the start of the rainy season to avoid any increased potential for runoff pollution and increased potential for the red-legged frog and San Francisco garter snake. So overall, the, uh, potential for special status species and migratory birds uh, to occur within the project area is low due to the, um, existing heavy foot traffic of the area and the disturbed nature of the project footprint itself. Um, in any case, the I S M N D includes mitigation measures to ensure that the biological impacts are less than significant. Um, and these include pre-construction surveys, daily, uh, morning monitoring uh, of the project site and the staging areas and construction B M Ps. Next slide, please. Uh, so the mitigation measures in the I S M N D primarily address biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and paleontop- paleontological resources to ensure that, um, any potential impacts, uh, would be less than significant with mitigation incorporated. The I S M N D was circulated for a thirty-day period that ended on July eleventh and no comments were received. Next slide. So the conditions of approval reinforce the mitigation measures of the, um, mitigation monitoring and reporting program and proposed by the I S M N D and include additional requirements for avoiding impacts to cultural resources and public access, as I've mentioned. Uh, and with these conditions of approval, staff finds the project to be in performance with the city's general plan and local coastal program. Next slide, please. Uh, the motion is on the following slide and our public work staff is available, um, tonight to answer any questions about the project and that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Um, it looks like, uh, Commissioner Benjamin, you have, uh, clarifying questions?
I do, uh, thank you, I appreciate the, uh, the moment. Um, I was looking for the wetland data sheets in the report and I, I did not see them, but I see that there are wetlands indicated on the map. Are the wetland data sheets, uh, in the public record for this item?
There was no formal wetland delineation done. There was, um, indication of one perimeter wetlands within the roadside ditches and the, uh, vernal marsh area. There is, uh, a formal wetland delineation being conducted, um, or has been conducted already and the reports are being prepared, um, for the larger Poplar Gateways project.
Okay, so yeah, and I believe there was a twenty thirteen delineation. I don't know if that's material, but I, I appreciate the clarification. In any event, I understand we're treating it as wetland, so we're stipulating that. Then in, in the, uh, analysis of the, um, there was a summary of, uh, the occurrences of, uh, listed species and I noticed for some of them, the, uh, exact dates, uh, or site references were Xed out. Um, you know, the map is, the scale is quite large and I just wondered whether, uh, there was a policy where we were not doing that or if the dates were vague. Uh, i- any insight that didn't look familiar to me. So I was a little confused by that. This was appendix B one.
Oh, thank you. Um, let me take a look, would you remind, or would you mind just repeating my question one more time?
Yeah, I just, uh, I wandered through the list of observances because I was familiar with a few of them. Um, and I just, you know, there's a column with dates and locations, I think it's called site date. And in some cases, the fields were incomplete. And I just was curious because that makes it harder to say, okay, they got that. You know, the report does reflect the occurrences that we are familiar with. So if the information is intentionally screened for some reason, that's fine. If it's not, um, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's better for us to have the, as much information as we can share without inviting, you know, species collectors to come in and, and collect. Um, so that was, that was a question. While you're digging for that, um, I also just wanted to confirm that the, the project does not anticipate, uh, taking vegetation out of the existing, uh, swale, is that correct? That, that is, yeah, that's correct. And the swale is, uh, considered Army Corps jurisdiction, or no?
Uh, we did not confirm three perimeter wetlands since there was no wetland delineation, um, formal wetland delineation performs, but, um, but again, we are treating it as, as wetland.
Uh, bed and bank? Uh, I'm just trying to figure out whether the, whether the U S Fish and Wildlife Service also had reserve or was interested in the project, I know they didn't comment. But are we considering it a, uh, a, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife jurisdictional drainage?
It is noted as potentially jurisdictional, yes.
I would also note, uh, Commissioner Benjamin, that this, uh, ditch is actually part of the city's, um, stream bed alteration agreement with the, um, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So we are, uh, annually doing maintenance. We are going to do the annual maintenance actually in advance of this project, um, which is always includes biotic, um, monitoring, uh, while anybody is in there. Um, and, um, over the last six to seven years that we've operated under that permit, um, there has, um, not been any identified, um, issue with, uh, red-legged frogs or California, uh, San Francisco garter snake in that area. But, you know, we, we continue to monitor and deal with that, but it is actually subject to a already existing, um, permit from this California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me, that was the two oh one three, uh, permit, I, I remember it now, thank you. Um, then there was a question in my mind about, uh, the way the water flows. Uh, I assume the reason we're doing a C D P rather than viewing this as exempt is that we're expanding the footprint of the trail slightly. If it was just maintenance of the existing surface, there could have been an argument for exemption or maybe not because of the habitat that's present. But we're incrementally increasing the amount of, uh, hardscape as the report clearly lays out. Uh, it was, by the way, I should start by saying, it's a, it's a really good report, thank you. What I, I appreciate that it probably isn't enough water to, uh, warrant an erosion risk. But I did feel like I wanted better clarity in how the water drains at the west end of the project. And I know that, uh, Maz and, and John are probably, uh, more expert, but any of you who might be able to help me understand it. Um, once I got under that little footbridge of the coastal trail, it looked like it got a little sandy. And, uh, the, you know, that's, that material is sensitive to increased flows. Um, I know it's going into a pipe from the conversation I had with Brittany. I know it's going into a pipe from the conversation I had with Brittany earlier today about this. But what I guess I'm wondering is, you know, how do we know if we have an unexpected impact? Is there a monitoring? And reporting criteria so that we don't get surprised or do you think there needs to be? Or is this really? In keeping with the SSA, the stream bed alteration agreement that that John mentioned a moment ago.
Hi, Commissioner Benjamin. Hi, everyone. My suppose you're getting a city engineer here. I'll take a stab at answering that question. I'll just mention that as part of the stream bed alteration agreement that we have for the ditch maintenance. Part of the effort is to identify any any areas of sediment removal. So what we do is we do make sure that when we're notifying the the department. That we quantify the amount of sediments and kind of monitor that way. So there is that annual follow up, if you will, on these sensitive drainage areas. And so from that perspective, we would, we do have some monitoring and oversight on it. So we do have eyes on it. Keep track of issues.
And so far, we haven't seen significant loss of sediment, measurable loss of sediment.
Not in that particular channel, no.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chair. I I think those are my clarifying questions.
I can respond to the appendix question quickly. I see that there is an asterix for the San Francisco garter snake entry. And this information is withheld due to the sensitivity of the species. I also see that the information is partially withheld for the California red-legged frog. It's just missing a specific. Day out of the day, month, year entry. I presume that is how the information was obtained from the database. I. Do not believe that was how our biological consultant presented it, but I can. I can confirm that for for future reference.
Yeah, thank you. That's enough of an answer. I just was unclear on why. So that's that's helpful. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Gordon, did you, I saw you had your hand raised earlier.
I did. Commissioner Benjamin actually asked my question already. I mean, I guess just to be crystal clear, this incremental widening of the path. There's there's no real widening of the path, right? Just to be. Clear. Is that right?
Well, we have, we currently have an eight-foot asphalt pathway in width and technically for a class one pathway, ten foot's the minimum. And so we are increasing the asphalt width from eight feet to ten feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had a couple of clarifying questions. In terms of the the going, the widening. I I'm assuming the widening is happening along the north side of the the path. That it'll expand north as opposed to toward, okay.
Yeah, that's correct. We don't want to impact the drainage channel, absolutely.
Okay, great. And then another question I had is. Currently, the way the trail exists. It was it excavated? So so part of what I read in the designs and or in the description was that there's going to be excavating down nine inches. For I'm assuming some sort of base rock layer or something like that. Is that how the trail is currently? Or is the trail just really asphalt on top of the without any kind of ex? How how I guess what I'm asking is, is it a different construction from what we currently have?
Yeah, it was. It was tough to say. We we did do some exploration out there and grab some samples. It was not, wasn't entirely evident what type of base material was there. Obviously, it wasn't suitable given the. Damage that we witnessed on the surface. And and our operation here actually is to do similar to what we've done in our street reconstructions. We have. We have an additive that hardens the material that that would basically be reused in in the as a base and then with the AC on top. And so what that does is actually reduces off haul and dumping and reduces the amount of, you know, on haul for, you know, materials for base. We're basically using what we have and we're using it on site, but treating it so that it's more suitable.
And then one other question. I wanted a little bit more clarity on what the signage. I can see in the designs where they'll be and it looked to me, I want to also clarify that that there's that white sign that. No longer, it doesn't really have anything on it now. If that's going to stay or be removed, it looked like it was going to be removed, but I wasn't clear on that. And then the other is that. For the signage that will be added, maybe a little more clarity on where pointing that out on the designs. And kind of how big some of those signs are as well, just so we can understand in terms of view, et cetera, number and kind of where. If that's possible.
Sure, we can, we can take a look at at the signage package. I mean, we haven't gone out to bid, obviously, but. Are we to be, would you like to show it up on the screen here?
Can I? Can I take a whack at maybe trying to answer somewhat? Part of this question. I think the answer is that first and foremost, yes, we we're recommending removal of the large. Post and the sign that's sort of painted and sort of graffiti and sort of. Kind of a kind of an interesting. Artifact from the past. Obviously, primarily the signs we're looking at are regulatory kind of signs. They're also identifying that this is the part of the coastal trail. With that, I think the bigger question comes about is what's the bigger picture? With the gateways plan, our intention is to is to create a gateway there. To do an entryway sign and kind of a larger package with this. That is not part of this package. But it would be absolutely and is part of phase one. I believe, Brittany, if you correct me, I believe it was part of the phase one to look at signage and signage package, which would include a an entry point there. With that, as you also know, we're we're working on the Poplar Complete Streets project. And part of that will look at how we treat down at railroad and interchange and intersection there railroad and offset intersection. At Poplar and we're look, we'll definitely look at options to try to address that. But again. We want to look at that as a gateway point as part of the gateways plan and was not included at this project. But if I sense what what you're maybe getting at, at least in part, that was really where that lands.
Yes, thank you. That that answers my question. And then one last clarificate click. Clarification. Brittany, when you, there's a slide rate and you don't have to go to back to the slides, but you had a identified the mitigation. And measures and one of them was it said daily biological surveys. And I just want to be really clear, is that really what you meant like daily biologic or is it daily biological monitoring? And of the construction, so there'll be essentially a biological monitor to for the the construction. Or you're actually doing daily surveys every single day of the. Of the construction?
Yeah, so the. Idea was to not propose exclusionary fencing as a mitigation measure. And supplement that. That with daily surveys. So there will be a biological professional onsite doing. Surveys for the California red-legged frog and San Francisco garter snake prior to ground disturbing activities every morning.
And this is consistent, Vice Chair. This is consistent with what we do with the ditch maintenance. The biologist comes in, does a survey through, walk through the area, look, make sure there's nothing. That they can spot and then they monitor the activity during during the day as well with that. So I think this is consistent with. With practice of what we're dealing in. So yes, they do a survey and then they do monitoring. So it's both.
Thank you. Were there any other clarifying questions, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. There was just one more. When you mentioned that you were going to be removing the existing material. And then, you know, combining it and putting in agents that make it, I think you said stabilizing. How long do we think that material will last? In other words, what's the expected frequency of maintenance of the trail?
Once for the base material, once it's in place, we don't anticipate any real maintenance on the base itself. This is, you know, we're looking at twenty to thirty year life up to in that case. Now, there's always the potential on groundwater and, you know, other other issues from underneath. But given our thickness, we we feel that that will be sufficient. And then in future, we're looking at just surface maintenance. So slurry and crack ceiling and potential overlays, you know, fifteen, twenty years from down the line. But as far as ground disturbance, we don't anticipate any additional ground disturbance for future maintenance.
Did we, would we compare that favorably to? And I realize the cost could be an issue, but with respect to, say, using decomposed granite, that's not unusual in coastal areas.
No, absolutely. And that's something that we've kind of gone back and forth on in discussion in various forums. What I would say in this scenario is because of our unsuitable base material from an engineering standpoint, we really. Thought it would be better not to allow the water to infiltrate into the base because that would degrade it and cause. Acceleration of damage to the pavement. So that was one thing that we considered when we were looking at it. And we, that's 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 going to help us as far as longevity of the.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Pogar. I have no other questions.
Right then, well, can we, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak about this item?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, I am not familiar if I have to open the public comment and then close it, even if we don't have anybody or I do. All right, I will. Okay, I will open it and no one else has come on. I'm. Give them a second.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, then I will go ahead and close it and open it up for Commissioner discussion. Either of you'd like to start us off? The boxes keep moving and I I keep trying to unmute myself, but I was on Brittany. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I I mean, I don't really have anything to add, except that this was a really good report. You know, really good presentation and this is much needed and I'm delighted you're doing it. So. That's that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin?
Sure, I I will be supporting the project as it's presented. The only, the only suggestion I would have. In what is really a great report is at some point. We, you know, in our hydrologic analyses of streams, we're going to, you know. I agree that this is not going to have a significant impact on erosion. It's just not that much water. At least in the swale because there's so much vegetation in it. But this area does have other, you know, at some point, it's possible that other areas that drain into this could be developed. And I feel like before those additional developments happen at some time, it would really be nice to have. The kind of dynamic analysis that lets us say, you know, this incremental additional flow is when we begin to have impacts. You know, there's some amount of flow that where impacts are significant and that and we're not there yet. But at some point, we could get there and knowing where that point is would be really helpful. So I realize it's an art. But I think, you know. To be candid, I don't think the city has been very good at managing our drainages, especially our our linear ones. And so I hope that over time we can get better at this. And I think this is a good small opportunity. The watershed isn't very large. It might be a great opportunity for us to develop. A really important addition that I think is consistent with our new LCP in our understanding of how. Our our terrace performs in the presence of. In train flows, but that's a little afield from this. I'm I'm a little jealous that Poplar is getting such a nice trail. I wish I could get my projects for the other end of my neighborhood. And some of the other neighborhoods in town to get trails this nice, but that's for another day. I I think it's a great project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. I too will support the project as it is. I. My, and I appreciate it. Actually, I appreciate the approach you're taking with, first of all. The trail design and the creating a better base layer for it to hopefully improve the longevity of it and to avoid having to go back and. Kind of intervene again. With another project like this. So I appreciate that. And the widening, I think, is important. The amount of use it gets, it is. Not easy, I think, for somebody in a in like in a wheelchair. The width is just not there. So I'm pleased to see that. I think that Commissioner Benjamin raises a really good. Broader point about thinking about drainage. And also, and this is an area that potentially has the opportunity to use the storm flows to improve some of the the. Seasonal wetland habitat in adjacent areas. And I think that's something that we need to, we we can make better use of this. The waters that are draining through our watersheds and and capture that for benefit of habitat. And all those critters we like to see. So I appreciate also the not proposing to do both fencing. And biological. Surveys and monitoring. I think that one or the other is appropriate. And I think that that you've, I I like that you've taken a practical approach to address. This is an area, this is a sensitive area. I think that the likelihood based on when the project's happening is very unlikely, but still, I appreciate the. The approach taken. So the only other thought that I had is, oh, and I think it's a good idea to remove that big white sign. Yeah, so the only other thing thought that I had is that. There are casual trails now starting to come in from the north in the middle of the the segment that's going to be redone. And it's, I'm not suggesting this as a change to this project, but it's something to consider for the Poplar Gateways project is that. It may be worthwhile putting fencing, putting that. What's that kind of fencing called? Split rail, split rail fencing on the north side of the the trail as well. To demarcate the these, because that that exists currently as you turn north onto the coastal trail or south, actually. There is a split rail fencing between the trail and the the kind of areas that are undeveloped. And so that's. It it it's not, obviously, there's trails that come in, but I just am pointing out that I think more there are, I see in at least one new trail that has. Wasn't there even just like a year ago. And so it's something to consider as a way to discourage people from peeling off and cutting through the the. The like the develop undeveloped open spaces areas out there. And it fits with the landscape. It's low profile. So just an idea, not suggesting that as a change to this project. So. If there are no, it sounds like I I don't, not hearing any other comments. Oh, Commissioner Benjamin, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I meant to ask about sequencing. So we're we're not out to bid yet. So I'm thinking this is probably happening in the dry season of twenty twenty two. Is that the general hope?
No, actually, we are, we are getting very close to going out to bid. We wanted to have this. This public hearing, obviously, first. I think in the next day or two, we'll see this one out to bid. Our plan is after Labor Day and before the. By October fifteenth, have it completed and be out of there.
Wow, so there's no issue with sequencing of other aspects of the Poplar improvement. This will be happening. More or less independently of those other things. And at the risk of touching a sore point, we're going to be, the the construction equipment is well, you know, the staging area is well located, in my opinion. Does take a little coastal access space and we're comfortable with the principles here that we're getting a long-term gain in coastal access for. Some short-term pain in reducing parking in that area. Is that is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I just did not want to leave that unspoken and considered.
And frankly, you know, without adding too much to that, I, you know, there there may be an occasion in which we have to look at closure. Entirely of that. Our hope and our belief is that we can retain the the. the, the, the parking lot open at all times. And I think we have a plan for that. But there may be an occasion in which we have to get, you know, you know, close the road and deal with it. And we could have access limited for a very short period of time, though.
Right, well, maximize, not unlimited coastal access, right?
It's improved and safer.
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy to make a motion. If you want one.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry, my square moved.
I move the resolution next in order.
Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
All right, shall we go ahead and do a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Pogar?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion approved. Congratulations. Message.
Thank you.
Hi, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany, for all your hard work with us. Getting us through there. Just, I don't think you've met Jonathan Wu. Jonathan is our most recent addition to the Public Works Department or Assistant Engineer. And we are very pleased that he was able to, to bird dog this one along with Brittany. And obviously Maz is, is, is great as well. So great team. And but anyway, glad to, to, to have this through. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good. I guess we're on to our next item on the agenda. Which is application for a coastal development permit amendment with a property located at six oh one Main Street. Is there a staff presentation for this? Scott, it looks like.
Yes, I have a, a quick presentation. Recently transitioned back to City Hall. Exciting. But can everyone hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Excellent. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'll go ahead and share a quick PowerPoint presentation on this item. Okay, can everyone see this, the screen? Okay?
Yes, it looks good.
Me too.
All right, so this, this item involves a new business, actually a second location for an existing business in, in our downtown. Here's the aerial photograph of the subject property. It's on the corner, the south eastern corner of Miramontes and Main Street. And the aerial photograph shows the previous business that, that was on the site. Probably all of us are familiar with it. I've also indicated the location of some additional angled parking spaces that would go in with the new business. Now, as far as the business description, the primary change over the, the previous business as far as intensity to the site is related to additional outdoor retail. Now, the new business would like to, you know, sell primarily plants and garden supplies. That's, that's really the focus of the new business. And the primary reason why this item is in front of the commission this evening. We haven't, we have a section in our code that requires the planning commission to review and identify, identify whether or not outdoor retail is appropriate for any given site. Now, in addition to the outdoor retail, the business owner would also like to conduct various workshops and events on a continual basis. So she's anticipating two or three times a month, maybe more of educational events. And also meal events on occasion showcasing local agricultural food products. Now, the action that the planning commission would need to take on this includes, as Chair Riddick mentioned, an amendment to the previously approved coastal development permit and architectural review. As well as acknowledgement of the outdoor retail and use consistency with underlying zoning and development standards. Now, normally, if there wasn't any retail involved, this is a principally permitted use on the site within our downtown. And there would need, there would not be any action that the planning commission would need to take. This slide shows the conceptual site plan that was provided with the application. And as you can see, I've, I've located it to, to where, you know, consistent with the aerial photograph that I showed earlier. Note that the, the storage container on the site will remain as is. Various decomposed granite paths and landscaping is also included with the business. And then an occasional removable Lotus-style tent would be installed to supplement events that take place on the site. Now, last month, the, the business proposal was reviewed by our Architectural Advisory Committee. And the committee was unanimously supportive of the, the business idea. But did suggest that fencing on the site remain as open as possible to facilitate the, the retail sales. They also thought that the additional three angled parking spaces within the public right-of-way addition was appropriate. And, you know, to hopefully provide more parking within the vicinity. And that's about all I have. I do recommend, the applicant and business owner is logged on this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions. She's available as well. We recommend the commission hold a public hearing, provide any discussion and action on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Benjamin, do you have a clarifying question?
I do. So Scott, we miss you in the neighborhood, but glad you're back in the office. I was, so this is zoned, was it CG or CVS?
Commercial downtown.
Commercial downtown, sorry. And is there a, is there a standard for how many square feet in this site that can be used for retail? And are we within it?
There, there isn't anything that's necessarily driving the, the amount of retail space. You know, obviously, the, there would need to be ample space in case there's an emergency for folks to base their site. But there isn't anything that would necess, necessitate limiting the retail sales. You know, a lot of times it comes up about off-street parking. But in this case, in the commercial downtown, we do have a provision that providing additional off-street parking isn't necessary when you have a visitor, visitor serving commercial use. So.
And do we have a landscaping requirement that we're meeting? I realize this with outdoor plants, we could sort of use some of that as landscaping. I'm not sure the tent would go. So just trying to get a sense of, really, you can get the thrust of my question. Are there standards that we should be thinking about beyond the parking?
Yeah, certainly. That, you know, normally with the tenant improvement, there, there, and if there is, you know, space available for landscaping, then landscape improvements are required. In this case, they're providing quite a bit of new landscaping and intend to maintain that moving forward.
And the, the, the trailer, the, the twenty TU or whatever, is this is the existing one on site at the east side of the parcel? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And there, there is a five-foot setback since it's, it's adjacent to a residentially zoned property. And the, the storage container does meet that requirement. And it's leftover from the previous business.
I noticed it's kind of got some, you know, exterior impact reducing, you know, shingly looking stuff on it. And they're anticipating leaving that or maintaining that. Is that correct? As opposed to it just, we aren't permitting a new, this T to be pulled out in a new twenty TU or whatever it is to get plopped down and just sit there looking like a big twenty TU.
No, no, if there were some, you know, substantial changes, you know, that's, that's probably something that we would end up bringing back to the commission. So.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, there is no intent of changing it. So.
Okay, I, I will defer to my colleagues. Thank you.
Other clarifying questions, Commissioners? Vice Chair Pogar?
I did, I have one. In the report, it sounded like one of the, there's the three parking spaces that will be lined. But it sounded like one of them might be blocking a driveway or something. Is that, was I correct? Or some sort of vehicle access to the property?
Yes, there is a driveway apron there. And the Maz, the city engineer and I, and the business owner talked about it a little bit. And the conclusion is, you know, to reduce the amount of signage improvements that would be needed. Leaving the driveway apron would be okay. And that, that, you know, possibly some temporary blocks could be put in the front. So.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Well, seeing none, I will open the public hearing and invite members of the public who wish to comment, or please raise your hands.
And should we let the applicant speak first and then do that? I was going to let her speak first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that, that she wanted to, but.
I think, well, if she, if she doesn't, she, then she doesn't need to raise her hand. I just thought she might, so I didn't know. If she doesn't, she won't raise her hand and I will move on to public comment. Seeing that she's not, and I will move to Mike Ferrera.
Welcome, former Mayor Ferreira.
You can speak, Mike.
Yes, good evening, Chair Riddick and Commissioners. During the Fourth of July parade, my grandsons and I wandered on into the facility and had a chance to talk to the applicant and get a sense of their vision. And I was just so impressed by it and by the welcoming nature of the applicants. And so when I saw that this was on the agenda, I just had to come in and speak in favor of their project. And it's a wonderful thing. It would be great on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mike. The public are welcome to comment at this point. Seeing no further, I'll close the public hearing and invite Commissioners to deliberate. Vice Chair Pogar, please.
I, I too was, I very much like this. And I, and I was pleased to see that how much of the that, that kind of the the existing kind of setting, that outdoor space could be so nicely fit nicely with this new business use of it. So I don't, I'm, other than to say, I like it. And I, I'm good, I'm supportive of it. I don't really have anything else to say.
That's fine. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, I, I didn't see any ref, I noticed the classes and I thought it would be interesting to take a class in Sidelotus. But I wondered whether they visualized, the applicant has visualized doing this without any sound reinforcing. You know, amplifiers and things like that, since it's outdoor. I didn't see a reference to it being included or excluded, but I might have missed that in the conditions. But I assume by default, this would only be people speaking without the benefit of a microphone and an amplifier and speakers. Is that correct?
The applicant would like to answer that. Go ahead, Ms. Seagull.
Sagali, yes.
Sagali, sorry.
That's okay. Yes, I certainly do not want any amplifiers there. That's not my intention. So we want to be just kind of as tranquil and peaceful and just have a really nice moment on Main Street. All of our workshops and some of the events we hope to host will not be amplified.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I couldn't be more pleased with what's proposed here. I think it represents a, a low-impact, soft, but valuable addition to that neighborhood and our town. And I will be supporting it with all the eyes in my throat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gorn?
Oh, hi. So I also stopped by both during the Makers Fair and then the Fourth of July. And it's beautiful. It's like such a change already. So, and everyone, everyone was so excited to see it in place. So there's not really much to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you think it looks nice now, just wait till everything grows in. It's going to look better and better.
And now I can't wait.
Well, I'll add my enthusiasm for this project to what my colleagues have already voiced. I think it, it's a terrific idea to have a, a retail on Main Street, which will, which will serve the community in such innovative ways and also serve, be retail that is visitor-serving when the tourists are in town. That, that's a, a very good one-two punch. And it, it will support very clearly policies in our land use plan to encourage vibrant pedestrian-oriented atmosphere and visitor-serving retail. So I'm, I'm very excited to see this. I'd love to have a bunch more such, such projects on Main Street.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention, you know, we will have a full-time lead gardener on site. Basically, every hour that our doors are open, we will have a professional horticultural expert on site. So we've made it really clear to our community and, and even our tourists, of course, that, you know, whether you buy something or you don't, please come in, ask us questions, show us images of your garden. We're happy to help in a variety of ways. It doesn't, the space is not just for retail. Of course, you know, we, we need it to be retail. We'll be doing retail there. But it's really kind of just to support our local agriculture and horticulture that we're known for in Half Moon Bay. And to really just kind of have a stamp right downtown. So we want to be really useful for our community and just get people interested in, you know, growing their own gardens, growing their own food.
Terrific. I, I can't wait to see that come together and, and blossom, so to speak. Sorry. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I just, I don't, did we, when you're ready, when you close the public hearing, you haven't already, I'd be delighted to make a motion to support this.
Have I closed it? I, I can't recall. Close it just in case. If there's no further discussion, then I'd be happy to have Commissioner Benjamin make a motion.
It is my pleasure to move the resolution next in order.
Vice Chair Pogar seconds it. A roll call, please, Bridget.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pogar?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck. In the absence of a Director Echus, does, do staff members have any form of director's report you'd like to make to the commission?
Um, I, I'll mention a couple of projects that are coming up on the council meeting that may have been, be of interest to the, to the council. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance is, I believe, scheduled for July twentieth, coming up a week from today. So that will kind of complete some of the work that you.
have been putting in over over the months and almost years when it comes to to some of these efforts and issues. And then another project, Creeks, the Creekside Residential Project over off of Church Street. The final map and affordable housing agreement are appear to be ready to go. And everything's scheduled at this point for council action on Tuesday night as well. So that would potentially close to to kind of long, long-standing and and significant efforts of the planning commission of the planning staff and Jill, in particular, I think on this, on both of these projects and Maz as well for his work for in my staff on the final maps. So just, just that. And I report that Jill is trying to take some time, and I'm pleased that she seems to be taking some time away and vacationing a little bit. And I think I can, it's okay to say that her, that her mother came out of intensive care and and came home. And and by all what reports I've heard and around us and and find spirits and doing really well. So that's extremely good news on on the director front. So it was my pleasure tonight to to sit in. And I was pleased that she actually in asked me and allowed me the 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 honor of being here and dealing with that. It's been a long time since I sat in this seat. And she does such a great job. I'm happy to allow her to come back into the seat next time around. But thank you.
Thank you, John.
Questions you guys have.
Thank you very much for your your efforts tonight. And thank you for the good news about Jill and her family. Then certainly everyone is delighted to hear that.
Yep.
Would any commissioners like to share communications at this point? Vice Chair Polger, please.
I just have a quick one. A few years ago, the San Mateo County did a sea level rise vulnerability assessment. And in fact, Jimmy and I, this is before, pre, I think this is pre-planning commission timeframe, we participated in meetings in about that process. Now, the the county has completely, there was a gap in that for the coast side. Essentially, the just the southern portion of Half Moon Bay, all the way down to the southern border of the county, there wasn't, the data wasn't available to do that with the previous study. Well, now the county is just is nearing the end of the sea level rise vulnerability study. And and they're having a community meeting, virtual community meeting, to share results and talk about the different issues and findings and kind of what what are the next steps for the the planning around seal rise? And that's tomorrow, but tomorrow evening. So I just wanted to share that since it's it's a county effort. And I think that if you go to seachangeSMC.org, that's the site where all they have all, that's it's the South Coast seal of rise. It it really doesn't include Half Moon Bay. It's just the southern part, like the Ritz-Carlton area south. But it's a little bit. So.
The Ritz-Carlton and the Ocean Colony golf course.
Yeah, but I I mean, I think it's something if you are interested, because it's a very different shoreline, especially around Pescadero. So it's a kind of interesting if you're interested in that. But yeah, it's it's, so I just wanted to bring that up. That's something.
If I if I could do the chair, Brittany will be participating. We have met with the county on this. I'm sure we will be bringing this back to the commission for more formal conversation and discussion down the road. I thank you for reminding me and reminding the commission of that. It's it's certainly out there. We we unfortunately sort of learned of this pretty late in the process. We knew they were doing it, but we found out about this upcoming meeting pretty pretty late in the process. But we are aware and 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 we'll be having some conversations. And I'm sure the commission and council will be brought up to speed on this issue.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. Another project that had previously addressed Half Moon Bay, but now is incorporating more of the Bay Area, has been publicized. And that was updated tsunami maps. San Francisco is now included. And for those of you who live in other areas who are on the broadcast, you might want to have a look. And it provides some context in which we can see what they have done elsewhere. So you might dig around on the USGS site, or maybe it's on the state site. On a a drier note, I would add that the goats have moved to the Landstra parcel and are chewing their way through weed abatement activities. If you haven't had a chance to go see them, or you have youngsters, it's, they are charming. If your dog sniffs the electric fence, it will only do it once. As I can attest from my own dog. So there's some good weed abatement activity going on right now in that area. On a maybe not as good, or at least less clear to me that it's good. I I have to report that there was some pretty substantial veg removal unrelated to goats that had taken place in June while I was on the other side of the country. And I have not completely resolved my understanding of what took place and and how it comports with the redebatement coastal development permit. But I I do hope to learn more. And if you haven't had a chance to come out and have a look at it, you can just go to the Venice PUD and you'll you won't have any trouble seeing where the work had taken place. I have nothing else to report. My last comment is Jill, if you're watching this live, turn it off. Thank you.
I I just wanted to make one quick comment. And Jill's not here, but she usually goes over pre-forecast meetings. I just wanted to let you guys know that we do have an AAC meeting here on this Thursday at eight thirty AM. And most of you get the notice on the email notification, but it is going to be in person. So if you have anyone in the community asking why it's not on Zoom, it's because it's in person. It's our first in a year and a half meeting back at the TED Atcock Center at eight thirty AM this Thursday. So anyway, it's our step, it's our first step in a public meeting in person. So stay tuned. We have a, we do have a director hearing on the 28th of this month, and I'm not sure if it will be in person or not. So stay tuned for that. You'll, I'm sure you're gonna notice, I believe that all of you are on the notification emails. So just wanted to let you know.
I'm sorry, through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I should have noted that I do expect to be absent for the meeting on September the 14th. I hope that I'll be looking at the top of the North Rim by the time you meet. Either that or predators will be looking at me. But I I'll miss you, and I hope you have a productive meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to think I've heard from every, almost every commissioner about the summer into the fall schedule. So I really appreciate that. That helps us for our forecasting and just making sure that we have enough commissioners to cover all the projects that we are coming up on. So helps the planners to to do that. So thank you for emailing me. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a little flurry of travel coming out of the pandemic.
Right. We're seeing that, I think, in the our own community. So yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Well, if there are no more communications, the time may have come for us to adjourn. May I have a motion?
I'll move for adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Nobody wants to leave.
I want to stick around.
Okay.
Commissioner Benjamin has seconded it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Hi, hi, Commissioner Goran?
Hi.
Vice Polgar, Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
You may adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good one.
Be well, as always.